Okay, Mary is out with, uh, she hurt her hip or something, so she's, uh, couldn't make it tonight. So, and Ed has got some, something he's working on now, he's gonna...
Yeah, with the school, like, school board, but he'll be late.
He said he'll be here.
He'll be the Ed.
And Ed's a big, important part of this meeting today, so we'll wait for him. Uh, I'm not gonna have too much on the president's report. I wanted to say something about the internet policy. But I, as you remember, we talked a while back about, uh, were we gonna put a filter on? Were we not gonna put a filter on?
Right.
At some point, I think we came to the conclusion that, uh, we weren't, we weren't parents, we were just going to the library, so that we were not gonna put filters on. Since then, um, there's been a kind of a push from Mid-York for us to put filters on. I think our original reaction to that, I talked to John about it, our reaction was, well, we've already, we've already talked about that.
Right.
It's over with. But it seems that there's, uh, we pay for our internet through...
We're right.
That's correct. That's correct.
And normally, small libraries get the internet for free, but big libraries like that, that's paying.
Yeah, that was one of...
If you have more than, more than, I think it's fifteen or...
Yeah.
More than fifteen terminals or connection, you get it, you have to pay for it. Now, there's, with some piece of correspondence that Elena sent me, that said that, um, if we will put a filter on our internet, they'll give us forty percent off of what they charge us. So, it seems like the government carrot and the stick thing. My initial reaction is, so what? Uh, but the other side of the coin is, I don't know how much it is.
Well, that, and that's a good point.
I mean, I don't know how much, I can't, I haven't been able, I haven't really tried hard to find out how much we pay Mid-York for internet.
Oh, I can get you that number.
Yeah.
It's the first I'm hearing of it, or I would...
Yes, I know, it's, uh...
That's okay.
It just kinda, was kinda rumbling around in my head, and I was thinking, like, 'cause my initial reaction was, we looked at that, we decided it's over with, but I suppose we shouldn't, um, sneeze at forty percent till we find out how much it is.
I, I think what's interesting...
One hundred a year.
One hundred dollars?
A year, yes.
So, it's only forty dollars? I didn't realize it was that little. I thought it was more.
I didn't either, I...
But, you know, but it goes to, uh, I guess, a bigger question, I'm not gonna get into all... One of the things that's been on my bucket list is, we don't really have a, in a board, a real view of all the things that Mid-York gives us, or provides for us, or we pay for, or we could get, or is there, is there a schedule of things that we could get or can't get? You know, we, with the key...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Right? And that may be something we could task Lena with telling us, what are all the things we could get, what do we take advantage of them, and what do they cost us? Because if you, even in, I don't think Mid-York, or maybe even York is there, you'll see that we pay for a variety of things, and they're all singled out what we're paying for, for different purposes. And I don't know that we all have a clear understanding what that is.
Okay, fair enough.
How about also, basically, could be using...
Right, right, right.
So, if it's only a hundred dollars, um, do you have any opinions here that we're gonna save forty bucks, and gonna schedule mine for forty bucks?
I'd say we go with the way the board did it before.
I agree, we, no filter.
No fil-, I agree. I mean, for forty dollars, I thought it was more, I, like, Heather just said, she brought up a good point, that it's always been like pulling teeth with Mid-York to find out, it's, we, we pay like twenty-some odd thousand, if I remember, twenty-some odd thousand dollars to Mid-York, but it's for a variety of services. But the point being is, are there more services that they could be offering? Because when we originally requested to copy the agreement, contract, whatever they call it, they said, these are the types of services we are providing you, but I never thought it from the other side of the fence, what additional services could they be providing us? Heather brings up a good point.
I think it is...
And then I think that needs further exploring, as to what kind of services, and also, I don't like, myself personally, when someone would say, if you would put the filter on, we'll give you forty dollars back. To me, that's like buying a couple of drinks, so to speak. I mean, it's a wrong analogy, but still. Or, let's say dinner, being one dinner, that's probably a better analogy. I, I just don't see the, the utility of saying...
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we're talking about, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Mid-York, Mid-York wanted us to put a filter on our internet, and we said no, and they said, well, we'll give you forty percent back on what you pay. Well, it seems like we paid a hundred bucks, so...
What are they filtering out, though?
Um, I have no idea.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a spamware of some...
Filter out announcements from the Republican Party, I'm all for it.
What?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this...
That comes under the exemption.
Well, so, the, isn't that, I thought the library was free and open for, uh, exchange your information.
It was filtering the internet.
Spamware, it's some kind of spamware, I'm sure.
I don't know.
Just a filter, things that you don't, viruses that could get into the system, you don't want that, right? Some, some kind of a...
The point is that we've, we've visited this, we've decided on this, and I only bring it up because it was a little wrinkle, but as it turns out, the wrinkle's so insignificant.
Right, but Heather does bring up a good point, Jay, and I think we could further explore that as to what benefits.
I agree.
But I don't know why they're getting into the filtering business. That's really up to...
Well, I, I don't know what the motivation is either.
Exactly.
It's got, the, the motivation is that, uh, if you use the filters, then, uh, you don't have to charge you as much for the services, because your computers aren't corrupted as much.
I'm not sure if that's what...
No? I think, are we tied into their name?
Uh, they provide us with internet.
They don't want viruses getting in, let's face it.
I don't think it's the virus, I, I, I don't know, I'd like to explore that further.
Well, if you recall, we talked about this before, uh, there were twenty-six libraries in the system, and only like five of them used filters.
Yeah, exactly.
And we had originally determined that that was, they weren't interested, but as it turns out, they're not paying for internet anyway, so there's no lever.
Yeah, that's true.
Fifteen of them, twelve or fifteen of them are not paying.
Maybe we could save time by entrusting that to heaven, which you...
With Lena, what we'll do is maybe for our next, um, our next finance meeting, I just made a note of it, we'll pull that together, so maybe the next board meeting, we can have a report back on what services offered.
Okay. So, we have a consensus, at least at this point, that, you know, we're not interested in, you know, we're not incentivized to do this.
Makes sense, Jay.
Well, we should find out what they are paying for.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we should find out more about what we're getting from Mid-York, what we're paying for Mid-York.
Okay, there are a few things, like, uh, pornographic, uh, four things, they, in their filter system, that they take out. They can't take out. Now, Utica has just a pornographic, and it has everything else. Now, in the difference, things that are taken out, we're not sure what's in them, there's like four categories, and we're not sure what happens within the categories, and that changes.
So, who has control over that?
We have no control, we have no control.
And they're right there, right?
I don't think Mid-York even has control over, within the categories, what is taken out.
So, you're saying that's probably done external to them?
Yes.
They're just bringing on the service?
And they have these four ca...
Good point.
I can get you the list of the category, but I can send it to you, I'll email what the category is.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think, like, within the categories, you don't know what the...
I think what Jay said, we're pretty much at that point, where we've already made a decision, we won't, we probably won't revisit that.
I can send you, I'll send you...
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
Put the category.
I don't see any incentive for us to change our, our opinion.
Position, no, I agree, Jay, no, I agree with you, we, we've already, you know...
Have you ever had it, fellas?
Not that I know of, no.
Never had complaints?
I, I thought, I thought we made a, a, a good judgment call originally, and I couldn't understand for the life of me why we're getting pressured to do it otherwise.
Then why did you bring it up today?
We're still talking about it.
Well done, I should tell you, well done, let me shake your hand.
Okay, well, not this...
Ah, don't pass it.
Kelly, that's it, Kelly right here. I only have three issues. The second one is, uh, I don't know if you've heard about it, but we had a little bit of a pest control problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a library book came back, and the library goes through a standard procedure of going through all the books to make sure they're clean and neat before they put them back on the shelves, and they found a bed bug in one of them.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So, there was a bit of a, bit of a fuss over that. They determined where it came from.
Really?
Uh, well, who, determined who brought the book back.
Yeah.
Uh, they had a chat with him, um, he said, well, you know, I don't think it was me. And then the next book that he brought back had a bed bug in it.
Wow.
So, they had a chat with him, we talked to, uh, Mid-York, we talked, nobody seemed to have a policy on what to do about this. So, we, we simply, um, they, they chatted with a guy, he understood that it was a kind of a public health issue.
Yeah.
And he needed this, so he promised he wouldn't come back or buy any books until such time as...
His old...
As he, as his issues resolve.
He thinks it's bad.
So, that brings up a couple of things. First, you know, the guy came in, was sitting in our chairs and stuff, so they had a, we had a pest control guy come in, take a look around, make sure the chair's okay, that were, that were fogged, or whatever they do to things like that.
Isn't that the same thing they had, like, on the internet, these hotels or motels, they were having, is that the same thing?
Yes, it was usually twice a year, and we just, you know...
So, it can be pretty serious.
Prevents of extermination.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
We were told, we, of course, we learned a lot about bed bugs in the show, period. And, uh, we were told, essentially, they don't, they don't live, uh, they don't live in libraries.
No, they don't read?
They have to live with people, no, they don't read at all. So, the question is, um, we didn't have any particular policy in place for how to deal with something like that.
That's interesting.
I think it was, it was handled, it was handled well, the people found it, but, uh, so, I asked John to look into, uh...
They have a termite policy.
Maybe which?
In our disaster plan.
Okay. But, you know, they're gonna need some guidelines on, because this is not gonna be the first time, and, uh...
That's interesting.
But I, I believe that's something that Policy Committee is in process working on, I don't think...
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up, because I don't think it's common knowledge, and, uh, at least with the board, I know that Ed knows about it, and a few of us on Policy know about it, because we've all been fussing with it, so everybody needs to understand. So, I think the, last thing, of course, the behavior policy, I think that will tie in with the pest control, but John and his Policy Committee are working on how to fit this together, uh, how to fold this stuff in with...
I think it's, I think it was, uh, wonderful that somebody caught it in the library, to be honest with you.
I agree, I think it's, uh...
I, I think that was, I, I didn't realize they went through that kind of screening process, but whoever did, I commend them.
The problem that we, that I see is that we have a lot of people come in the library and just sit in the chairs and read.
Yeah.
They don't bring stuff back, it's, it's not possible to, you know, to screen everybody. So, uh, we're gonna be, look, they're gonna be looking into some kind of, some kind of general policy for how to deal with, uh, a little public health issue, something concerned.
And, and you know, Jay, that's interesting, because I think it, it may be small to some people, but it's important, because as a board, that, you know, we, we, there are a lot of people that come through that library, and it's just as important to have little issue on bedbugs.
Well, you know, I, I think that if, uh, if it had gotten out of hand, um...
Yeah.
It would've done us some serious public damage, and we'd have awful good, hard recovery.
So, now we're being proactive?
Yes.
Rather than reactive.
Plus work, plus work. They're act, they're extra alert now, I mean, they check all the bins and, you know, but...
I think, I think that's one, it's great that they did that.
So, that's all I have, I wanna keep it short. Ed has a lot of stuff for us tonight, he's been a busy guy.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I will give, we'll give you some room. So, I think, uh, you know, we didn't approve the minutes, did we?
No.
I just talked all about, all the stuff that's on my line.
I move we approve.
Ah, I'll second it. Want to approve the minutes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Looks like it was unanimous. Thanks for getting me off that spot. Uh, Elena?
Yes.
We're gonna let you do the director's report.
Okay, sounds good. If you don't have my report, I have your extra copies left, so please feel free to help yourself.
I tried to tell Elena that, uh, you never give out copies before you speak, because people spend their time reading instead of listening.
Oh, okay, you know, I will be very short, it's a circulation report and director report. We, we have a lot of new programs, a lot of new events riding on, community events, a way, considering, we, um, got, I believe, very good relationship with New York School. This June was scheduled fifteen classes, visit to library, and give the library card. We have eleven kindergarten classes and four second grade classes. Each Thursday, I, I will be myself doing program for kids without autism. Uh, it starts in June seventeenth and until end of the summer. So, it's very many interesting programs, and I'm happy that we got a very good team in the library for doing hard work. Another thing I would like to speak, I see in agenda, I very briefly, we have monthly food drive, we have food collection for dogs. I attach all the programs for May and for June in my report, it's, it'll be over here. We have Utica, we have this at the library on June ten, and we have a few programs with historical society, and a lot of programs for kids and for young adults now. So, another thing I would like to talk about, I think Ed will tell more, it is about building and ground.
You can skip that one if you want to, 'cause, you can, I looked at...
Yeah? You think I can say?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have, as we told in our last meeting, no one company, no, um, has, um, no heating and air conditioning company, and no carpet cleaning, don't have the state contract. So, we go ahead and check three quarter, and all the company submits information, I send it to Ed, and you guys decide, just let me know if possible, as soon as possible, so prior, some reading, our carpet will, will be clean, as well as air condition. When last time, I went with David from Carlsen's Room downstairs, it was in here open filter, I was ready to pass out. It was black, and it was, you know, looked like it's not clean for several years, it was a lot of wood on the floor, just, I would like if possible, it's done. We have an emergency, our front, uh, tomato door, have stuck and not open, so, and I get permission from library board, and company came and fixed the door, so it's done now there. And broken refrigerator and carpet has been removed.
Thanks, Les.
Yeah, thank you.
Ten bucks.
Uh-huh.
I know, I got the, I got the bill.
You got the bill?
I do.
Where's my ten dollars?
I just can't come up with ten bucks, you gotta go through the process, buddy.
Here, here's my bucks.
We got a process.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, you can get it from him, 'cause he...
That's a donation, that, now, take care of it.
I'll tell you, he gets it for me. Yep.
You guys, sure.
Um, it was, um...
You hear a bird here?
So, uh, we, we have several workshops incoming. I write more, and I would like to say that, to thank you, Jay, Wayne, and Netflama, we have two staff meeting, May nine and May sixteen, they join us, answered a lot of questions, and clear a lot of misunderstandings about this newer IP piece. When you're doing something new, nobody else doing, in Mid-York, I found out it's only one, one library, in past, and not now, white, but a no, and a lot of, you know, things, I happy, I really appreciate Jay, uh, Net for coming on sixteen and help with this. So, we good for, for now. Now, uh, budget hazard, I put everything together, but I will not send it out until we meet, you know, kind of look, uh-huh.
Because one of the things we have to do is, part of this process is, we, we still have to go back to two thousand fourteen, right, and we have to make some adjustments to fourteen. So, before we do, look at two thousand fifteen, and we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet her and I together and go over that, and then we're gonna bring it to the finance committee before the next board meeting.
Yes, so...
Because part of that is, right, we, a budget, everybody says we passed a budget, oh, it's a great budget, but it really isn't, you don't know. You don't know till the year's over if it was a good budget or not, right? It's a footprint for where you wanna go. So, I just wanna make sure, because fourteen, kind of, I've kind of put most of that together, and it's still a good footprint of where we're gonna end up the year, before we start making assumptions about fifteen, so, that's exercise, she and I have to go through.
Yeah, but we, we just need to talk, and then I will send it out. And last thing, uh, you would like me, if you have any question, this is my report, this is circulation report, just, if you have any question, last thing, I would like a, few things, summer mentor program, I got a call from Lynn Spelman from Senior Center, and she showed up as well. They have a huge pro, program, fifty volunteers and fifty students, it's hugely involved with our community, I will tell, maybe it's a political issue somehow. And she asked me, she is no more longer available to do it in Senior Center, and she asked me if we can do it in the library, if not here, but next year. This not to be decided immediately, I would like to do it, but it's not just my decision, your opinion is very valuable for, for me, because it's, if you don't mind to pass it out. And other things, uh, this year, I was...
Excuse me, what exactly is that? What do they do now?
They don't do programs this year. How, if you need to follow me, your husband is very sick, this is a flyer, you can pass it out, it's a program for students.
So, they wanna use our building, or our people, or what?
No, they would like us do this program, they...
I'm familiar with this program.
Yes, it's actually, it's a flyer, if you like to pass it around.
All right, I'm sorry, I just wanna...
No, no, it's fine, Jay, it's fine, so, I just would like, no opinion, it's a good thing, very good thing for community, but it's cost a lot of commitment, too.
And I guess, of course, if you're trying to do it for this summer, it's wonderful program.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna take a lot of coordinating and the volunteers and the space, and I'm not sure it can be just jumped into and, at the end of May.
Yes, I think so, it's my, yes.
To start the end of year.
Well, clearly, this is complicated enough, it needs to be thought about by everybody.
Exactly.
Yes, so it needs to be planned, and we have few new things, so fifteen classes visiting school, and I'm doing a program starting June seventeen for special needs kids each week. Another thing, this year, I was able to save a lot of money on programs, we not pay them for, we just invite doctors who would like, probably, what's their name, become known in community, some enthusiast, an altruist, as a June, Teresa, who love, Hishen, can hunt in, add many others, and Oblique Anasta, I not spent a penny for any pro, program, but I have received through our online survey, and face and face, people asking if it is a possibility, they can obtain through the library CPR, first aid, native knowledge and certification, especially you. And I contact American Red Cross, I'm sorry if you can pass, Jay, for me, I, I contact American Red Cross, it's little bit costly, it's over five hundred, so I just would like...
Elena, Elena, do me a favor.
Yes.
Right now, write this down, Ed Prue, P-R-U-E.
Ed Prue?
Ed Prue, he's, uh, at the Perry Junior High School.
Mm-hmm.
Give him a call. He is a certified Red Cross, um, teacher.
Okay.
And ask him if he wouldn't mind coming down to give us a class, and you can skip all those fees.
Oh, great. Ed Prue, okay, I will contact them. Which school he, junior high?
G High, Perry Junior.
I gotcha, okay, okay, so move one, library museum pass program, how say Shakespeare one day, the damned, to be or not to be, this is a question. I got it.
I forget the order.
I got, and you can pass it, just look around. I got an attention from one museum to start library museum pass program here, not just me, whole, the, 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 full library from twenty-six started already, ten library kind of things about this, our library including. What is all about, for example, you, you're not using library maybe, or using credit, but you like a museum, so you can, you, you can check library pass, uh, museum pass out, as you check the book and so, and go for free, or, or go with minimum pay. This program is very popular in Long Island, and Nase, and Suffolk County, but they have a different situation, they have a lot of museum around with him, thirty, twenty, in the drive. This museum, this pass is seventy-five dollars per whole year, but if we buy passes, it will be not one or two, it will be quite a few, and it will be not just one museum. I would like to ask your opinion, if you would like, if you see a future, because if it's cool, but if we think two step forward, do you think it's be something useful here, or am I better hold on? I just would like to know your opinion. Whole program cost about six fifty, seven hundred over the year. It's another opportunity to promote the library and let community know that we are not just place to take a book or DVD, we're more than that, we're community center, so it's up to you.
Can I ask a couple of...
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so, what you're saying is you'd get like fifteen passes, more, and I could come check one out?
Yes.
And you could check one out?
Yes.
But those are gone, somebody can't...
You need a limited number. Yes, it's just, it's just the book, you, you have, you would like to read something very popular, and it's not available, we put you on the hold.
Right.
As soon somebody done, you can come with your kids, your family for free, we pay for this. But if it's not enough passes, you could wait, you wait until it's available, or if you, the same.
Okay, that was the first question.
Yes, another, it should be, if we're doing, it should be policy, it should be agreement for museum passes, maybe not in policy, I put it in, in library procedure, brochure and museum pass user agreement, these three steps should be done, then we just, process them, not advertise it on website and town crime and...
It's an actual card or a pass that they carry with them?
Or actually, I just pass it.
Right here?
I just pass it.
Right here?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay, and then they bring it back when they're done?
Yes, it usually should be, if we approve it, it's be library, what, here, and you could check it out with your library card, the same way you...
And there'd be a list of the museums?
Yes, it'd be a list of, for example, this one, it's about our drive, I have, maybe some of the local museums or so. If you think it's something interesting, we can do here, just letting, you know, I would like to know your opinion. Okay, now, computer workshops, website development, and students, and computer workshop, we have quite a few of them, about social network, how to use and how to play out on Facebook and Twitter, we have workshop about computer security, about computer maintenance, we will coming, uh, two incoming workshops, how to buy when you buy, and also, uh, how to, um, do a job search, resume writing, completing online application, so, I give it to you. It's coming really soon, and we doing course classes soon, or starting for August first, it's already in plan, on all computer programs, starting Excel, computer, kindergarten, basic level, intermediate and advanced, so, and it's be sign list, whoever like to sign, you can sign, and we doing course Russian lessons soon, in the library, it was a lot of request during the test of Russia event. And, um, our student is almost done with our website putting in WordPress, but to be honest with you, here is one problem, Mid-York not let him assess, in order to transfer all our website from what we have now, the work is done, it's need be transferred from what we have now to WordPress. It's need be transferred from what we have now to WordPress. It cannot be done from my computer or someone else. It should go through Mid York, they give them assess. Mid York, because he's not our staff, he is volunteer. Mid York give him very much restriction on how to do that and what to do. They give us the option over totally separating from Mid York on computers. And it create a lot of problems for us.
Elena, let me run interference. I wasn't aware that they were imposing restrictions until just now.
Yes, I just...
And as chairperson, I will monitor that, I will go back to Mid York. They really should not, this gentleman that we received from through MVCC through...
Yes, he very nice.
They were very gracious. In fact, I went to see her today, I had an appointment with her. But they got tied up with a recognition dinner over at the auditorium there. And when she came back, we were supposed to meet, but she had to leave. So we are going to be meeting tomorrow. But the work that they've done is commendable.
Yes, it's great tool.
But this is another situation where I was not aware that there were some restrictions being imposed by Mid York.
It just came up, yes.
And, okay, well, I will go and talk with Mid York.
Actually, it is Linda, Linda Montefiore. And Linda and Marshall, I scheduled it.
I don't understand why there is this, these restrictions, be they what they may. And I, it could be something simple, I have no idea. But this is news to me, but as chair...
I knew this news to all of us.
Yeah, so, I, first thing tomorrow morning, I will have a discussion with the lady down here. Because they, MVCC has been more than gracious to up to our...
It's probably a security issue that they can get around.
Yes, actually, how I know it, Tuesday, I called Chris Messenger. He told me he will be very busy until Tuesday, May twentieth. He has exam, he's tired, he know he will be late. So until May twentieth or May twentieth, we get together and rub the project. So yesterday I just called him around four P M. And asked how things were going and when we ready to rub. Yes, and he told that things going well, he working with Quaté in Mid York. But from official, it's Linda, Vanda has nothing...
Yeah, I have to know what it is, like Jay said.
Well, you're gonna make the call, so it's all...
We can make it, you know, yes, let's move on. Last thing, our volunteer cleaner, he doing a good job, but it's not enough. He's here one twice a week for hours or so. He has a full-time job and he kind of helping us. He wash the floor, he wash the stairs. And the question is, we have two option. Option number one, we keeping this volunteer cleaner now, we have nothing else, you know. And another, starting September, I have an arrangement with New Hartford Studios. It will be a special class with special needs kids for working on cleaning library and shelving. But I'm not sure how it will go. Question, because I did budget, to hire a cleaner for sixteen hours, starting two thousand fifteen, will cost us eight thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars per year to hire just our part-time cleaner, sixteen hours a week. So if you would like, what way you would let me to proceed? I can actually keep with Murak, Murak Abadim. He working two, three hours per week. He cannot do more because he has a...
Could you run that scope of work through B, G and T? Is that...
B, G and T.
Building the grounds?
Yeah, is it that?
That'd be the personnel.
Sure, sure.
Oh, well, personnel?
Yeah, they just run it to personnel and move on.
Yes, and anything, actually, let me know. And if you have any question in my report, this is implication. And this is, just if you have any questions, just let me know. Feel free to ask me.
Let me...
Oh, and last thing, I'm sorry. This, we spoke yesterday, personal committee. If you don't mind, if you like to approve this plan, just, I would appreciate it and it's...
It's a file retention?
If you have any... No, it's my long-range plan, some plan circulated. If you would like to approve it, so we can go on our stop meeting June eleven, we just make a steps, you know, make a plan to work. You have a library director, now you see all the calls and qualifications. Let me know after this meeting go.
Do we approve this at the next board meeting?
Right.
Yes.
I can hesitate to be approved.
Yes, I just need if you have any questions. It doesn't need to be approved. If you have any questions, corrections, opinions, qualifications, I'm here and it wasn't...
Okay, all, thank you. All of the things that Elena has given us, she's been nice enough to write them all out. Let's, let's take them all home and study them and look them over. And if you can, do you have any questions, contact Elena. If you get any answers you think we ought to know, share them around. So that when we meet next time, we can have an intelligent discussion on this. We can't, we can't deal with this when it's just dropped on our heads. There you go.
Sure.
Everything looks pretty complete. Well, there's nothing that you can't wait for the next board meeting, is there?
No, absolutely, it's fine, I can wait, no problem.
If you have a problem with the cleaner and you need to do something, talk to personnel, maybe I can work something out.
That's right.
She doing well, she working hard, but it's...
We'll be talking about it Friday.
Yes, we can talk Friday.
Now, I just, I just have one question in regards to the account you did bring up quick with. Is that, no, never mind. If I could, you'll share the scope of work with personnel, that's fine.
Right. If you have any questions, just ask me.
Yeah, we can, then we can determine if his scope of work, the amount of his scope of work, fifty percent into thirty percent.
Exactly.
Where are we going?
Yes.
Is there more than one volunteer?
Well, we got one point in doing down labor, and we don't have a cleaner. And we're talking about opening up on Wednesdays. You know what I mean? I mean, first things first, so I mean, that's gonna be on our agenda for Friday.
I mean, there's also the possibility of hiring a cleaning service, you know. I mean, there may be a contract deal.
Go ahead to the committee, if some folks are interested.
Nothing sort of. For ten bucks?
Less said for ten bucks, he'll do it.
Go ahead, say it.
Okay, you, if this looks for me, or what you just got from Elena, you've seen it a couple of meetings ago. She had prepared something like this, but at that time, the policy committee thought it was supposed to come through them. Okay, we just had a meeting yesterday and decided it should not come through the policy committee. This was Elena's plan and it should come direct to the board.
Okay.
That's why, if it looks for me, or you would've seen something...
But like Jay said, we'll review it in the next meeting unless there's something pressing. Good point, Jack, good point.
You have seen it.
Go ahead, we, I, we make changes to it.
I would hope that everybody will come to the next meeting, prepare to step through this stuff. Exactly, yes. Very well. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heather?
Can I get a motion to approve bills unless anybody has a question?
I think a motion to approve the bill.
Yeah, you all got it? Email to you?
I second it.
All in favor?
Move aye. You pay the bills.
Yes, we have bills.
Les, are you with us?
Oh, I'm...
I didn't see you vote.
I don't know what the bills are, so I don't know what I want to vote.
So are you abstaining or voting or...
Right here.
No, or?
Right here.
They were emailed to you on Monday night?
Yes, yes, I sent them.
Email, that's why I need to, okay. I'll abstain.
All right. Les is gonna...
Don't pay the bills, I don't.
Okay.
I just, were there, as far as the taxes, Heather, were there, did we incur any late payment or charges?
No, we paid it on time. We paid no payment, we paid it on time.
No, no, I'm just saying.
No, I'm just answering.
Okay.
So did we vote on it?
Just under the wire.
I think we did, yeah.
I only have one question, and I know I emailed you, and I know when I emailed you last night, you probably lucked for the day. The village floral, what was that for, the thirty-eight bucks or something?
Village floral?
Floral.
Village floral, I'm, you know, I cannot recall, I think, you know, let's meet tomorrow, I will be in office.
Okay.
And I will go ahead and I will...
Well, you can take that, the bills are there, so you can take that with you. Or I got it, yeah, I just, and so I emailed you and I know you probably, you weren't today, so...
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. You have the report, I don't know if you have any questions. One of the things, at next month's meeting, we're gonna be coming back with a couple of budget adjustments. Greg has gone through and suggested a couple, but I think we need to go back and just, I'm gonna sit down with him and try to go through it and do it in finance.
Transferred to document?
Within the budget itself?
Yeah.
Our finance committee meeting, we had a finance committee meeting where we talked about what was the possibility of opening up on Wednesdays. Lena took a first crack at it. She took three or four cracks at it, actually.
Once you got it started.
Once you got started, but it was a team effort. And so we want to have one more finance committee meeting and then come back to, I think, at next month's meeting and to see if you think it's a viable plan. I think it's something you'll be pleased with. I think it's, the staff, Greg and Lena have worked very hard at trying to figure it out and how it can be done. And I think there's a general excitement by all staff in doing that. So I think it's gonna be a lot less than what we thought it was gonna cost. So, yeah, so...
We'll await the real numbers, right?
Yes. We also talked about the two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars that we got back from the community foundation, what kind of investments we could get into. I talked to Mary Mandel, thinking who's got the most money, right? At local government, which is in Hartford School. They only invest in money markets. They find that in some of these other investments, the expense outweighs the additional interest that could be earned. She agrees with me. The only other place that might give us a little bit of an edge is the class system, which is Downstate, known by two women. And so she was actually gonna call them on our behalf and see if it's something that might work out for us. So there again, we'll know at the next finance meeting a little bit more about that. And I guess, and so we did talk about those two things. The one thing I, which is not on the agenda, which I just want to bring up, and we had talked about this before, is contributions and donations, sort of being under this committee. And last week, a friend of mine passed away rather suddenly. And one of, it had nothing to do with me, but my death. But one of the things in his obituary was that any donations could be given to the Stevens, Swans, Main Society or the New Hartford Public Library. And it made me start, and I had nothing to do with that, but it made me start thinking about what we do with donations. I regularly see the cash receipts that come in, because I get copied on everything, as to where money is coming from and who's giving it. I know that when Earl was your treasurer, he really had a really good handle on all of that. And I think that it might be time that we do, take a review as to how we accept donations. How do we thank those people? I know thank you letters go out, but we don't necessarily, and some of our bigger donations, should we do a public thank you in the town crier? I don't know the answer to that, I don't know which right or wrong.
That is something that the procedure committee is talking about.
Okay.
They had policies and procedures, but we're revising them.
And I think, okay...
With conversation with you was what they had, what we had decided.
Yeah, because I think, I, I'm gonna talk to Earl Cunningham and maybe Kevin Kelly because they were around when they really started accepting contributions. Because it goes to the purpose when you're asking for a contribution, what the purpose is. How do we, like Operation Sunshine, you have to check a box, you know, I do want to be thanked publicly or I don't. There's, you know, there's, and so I think there's some, there's great opportunity for, for the library and donations, if we come up with a little more of a structured program.
May I interject?
Yes.
Okay, it was kind of my report today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Well, I subjugated it.
Okay.
Since two thousand and seven, it has been my job to, to the board member, to thank the notes. We printed cards for straight donations, for memorial donations, for people who want to honor other people and so on, the four different cards we use. And Earl and I used to work very well. He would get the cards in, he reported to different people, including me. Even today I was working on it, it's a lot of work. And I was going to report, I can do it right now, it's a time, a matter of fact, I can do it.
Why don't we do this in order first?
Oh, I'm done. I, I'm really, so I guess it's just something, we, you attach this with contributions, donations, and, and so maybe off-site, off-site here, we need to have a discussion.
As Janice said, we had quite a long discussion in the policy committee meeting about gifts and donations and how to define them. And we came to the conclusion that we can't come to any conclusions about government financing.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think so, the moment coming is that I saw where there's, you know, some opportunities for some budget transfers in there, you know, obviously, but everything else looks like it's going fairly well.
I think so. I mean, I, I...
If you'd like, not tonight, obviously.
And I just, I, I have, I cannot say enough about Greg Keeler. I cannot, you guys haven't seen this yet, but you know, we had talked about the cash basis versus the accrual basis of accounting. He's now got, you haven't seen these yet, but he's now got that done.
Good.
And we've been working through this and I can't, he is really becoming a top-notch bookkeeper without having any official training. He's taking on, I mean, you're gonna start in the next couple of months seeing additional reports that you're really gonna like seeing, and he's doing a great job.
Excellent.
And I can't, I can't say enough about that, but, okay, I'm done now.
Okay. Would you like to do yours?
Well, I have several items, just have one item to finish up. If a committee would like you to appear, show what we have been doing, the card system, and there are different ones, as I said, and the process we've gone through, it's worked very well. Earl and I have always worked very closely. I'll be glad to do it. Whatever committee it is, be it finance, be it procedure, or be it personnel, let me know and I'll bring the materials.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Mary DeRoz is, is out, she hurt, hurt her hip, so she's not gonna be here, so. I will just skip the bylaws update. I, I know there hasn't been any other meetings since the last one I went to, and we're about halfway through.
Can I just mention one more thing?
Certainly.
The audit. For all intents and purposes, it's done. I'm just resp, and, and what's gonna happen is the CPA firm's gonna reach out to Jay and Ed and Lena and have a closing meeting with them and go over whatever findings we might have. We, we had to do a couple more journal entries. And I also, Dargiangelo really was not conversing very well with Greg. They just made entries the way they wanted to make them, and they did not, he did not tell me or tell Greg. And so over the past couple of weeks, we've, we've refined that process because last year that didn't happen, and that's why we got into a little bit of trouble. So you should be hearing from them shortly, in the next couple of days, setting up a meeting with you. So we should have an audit for the next board meeting completely.
Okay. Is that the one they're gonna request management responses to?
Yes.
So that'll be Jay and Ed and...
Well, I don't, I don't wanna spoil all the fun. I don't wanna spoil all the fun, but there is no findings for this year. Okay, just responding to the four findings that there were in the previous year. Do we have an investment policy? We passed one. I don't think they need to respond to that, they can if they want, that's what I told them, we have one. So each of those, most of, you know, disaster policy, we have one, we passed one. So I think there's responses for all those four findings, so it's, it's not even, there is nothing to respond to.
So we've been fixing the programs?
We have, but we knew them, right? Because they outlined last year, so.
Okay, Eddie, you're up.
I'm up.
Billing and grounds.
Billing and grounds. We've gone over the, the equipment that we, we put on obsolete, and that's out of here, thrown away. The automatic door, had to be done, y'all, they did have a state contract, so Elena went ahead and did that. Pest control has been done. We have two outstanding quotes that are now completed. These are, these are, remember that we have different varying dollar amounts for contract services that need certain types of approvals. Anything less than four thousand, between two thousand and four thousand. It's just three quotes and a decision. We have not had a chance yet to go through that with the Building and Grounds Committee, which will be meeting tomorrow. What I would like, in these cases, for the carpets and for the air conditioning and heating, I would like the board to give the committee itself the authority tomorrow to review all of the, the quotes they're in and make a decision with Elena on which one to go with.
I'll make the motion.
Certainly. All in favor?
All right. Thanks, guys.
We got it, Ed.
Thanks, okay. This, here's the analysis of our garden RFP. I'll pass that around, so everybody can get a copy. We had four responses to the RFP. I put together, obviously, in the RFP that you guys saw, price was the first consideration on some very specific things that needed to be done as far as scope of works go, breaking it out between the lolly garden and the rest, okay? So what we have here is a, a quick look at the prices between the, the four, the yellow being one, blue being two, the orange being three, and red being four. The, all I did was subtotal up for each one of them and total it up. The red, I'll start with the red. The red contractor has two issues with him. One is he evidently looked at the per-week column and decided he was gonna do it for the whole year. So his price is inflated, it's nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, which incidentally, for what I can determine with Greg's help and Heather's help, is in two thousand and thirteen, our complete billing for our current landscaper was nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. All right, so that's probably not out of whack for what it's costing us. All right, so that's probably not out of whack for what it's costing us, okay? However, the second issue with this contractor disqualifies him. He did not return his bid in time. Okay? So he was, he was a few days late returning, returning his, returning his bid. He was also high on other issues as, as well. The, so as you can see, so what's in the running is yellow, blue, and, and orange. Yellow being the, the lowest, blue being the middle, and orange being the, the highest price. I can tell you that the blue contractor was the most professional in his response to the board with his RFP. A nice letter with suggestions for improvement, the whole thing, you know what I mean? So that's where, that's where we are. Insurance is not an issue. All the remaining have, have liability insurances, a million dollars in the currents, and have satisfied the requirements of, of the bid. We opened these bids on May 16th, the day after they were done, or the day that they were, the day after they were due, and so that's where it stands. So obviously, at this time, it looks like the recommendation is, is yellow for the, for the total, for the total price. Not only for the total price, but for, if you look at the per-week charges or per-event charges, he's also either the lowest or just slightly above blue.
That's a $3100 difference between yellow and.
Apples, apples to apples, it is.
Is there a name on?
There is. I, I, throughout discussion, I thought it'd just be appropriate if we left them out, and I'll let you know if the board agrees, you know, if the board wants to make a motion, ask, you know, ask.
I think that's a good idea.
Ask any questions, and then we'll.
I'd like to ask a question. There's such a disparity in the amount of numbers. Do you have any sense of the low bidder being less qualified or?
Preferences? We have references? We have, we have references. We have contracts of similar nature that I asked for, that were supplied.
Been in business for a while.
All of them have been in business for a while. Actually, all of them have been pretty close to 30 years, actually, and all of them have the same amount of employees, in the neighborhood of five to 10.
Well, clearly, we're looking for the best price, and we just wanna be careful we don't step into a hole with somebody who's unqualified.
Right. No, I've, I've talked.
So if you've gone through that grill.
I've gone through the grill. I'm, I'm very, listen, I gotta tell you, I'm very comfortable with all of them. They're, they're all upstanding companies. They'd all do a professional job, for sure. I am comfortable that, that our yellow contractor can provide a, a quality service.
I, I, myself would move that we go for yellow, with the understanding, though, that once again, I'm a firm believer in openness and transparency. We need to identify, subject to the board's approval.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's just doing that so that our decision would not be taken by anybody.
I'd say the yellow. I, I would move that we accept the low bid of, was it this one right here?
Yeah, 2925.
Yeah, 2275.
Plus the bottom, plus the bottom.
Right, it's both of them.
Both of them together.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the bottom line total here, 29, in the yellow column.
Oh, okay.
No, for example, just for, just for, just for, just for giggles, if you looked at the, the, under the Lolly Garden, the penultimate, the second from the last, says winter maintenance. Look what it says, showing of all the walks, including benches, salting of walks is required to maintain safexes. Service may require seven days per week from first snow event until last November of the season. So that's per event. So if you look, you know, yellow says that they can do that for $25 a shot for that garden, and then, of course, you know, all the way across, 115, 150, and 45.
Yeah.
And the same thing is true. It's the exact same for the last, on the rest of the grounds below, the last, the last entry. It's the same winter maintenance for other grounds excluding the garden. And, you know, again, per event, you know, it's, it's also a, a low, a lower, a lower amount by a considerable amount.
I think, I think the RFP was a really nice job.
Well, thank you.
It was beautiful.
I think it covered all the bases. It gave us as much protection as possible, and I, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't go with your recommendation without reservation.
That's why I'm.
Well, I talked to all of them, 'cause I called them all first time on the phone to tell them to go pick up the packet to make sure they have that.
Yep.
So I'd be curious to know.
Yep.
Which color is which color.
I will, I'll have that.
Do we have a second?
And again, it was, I just didn't want, you know, any bias to come in.
We don't have a second yet.
What's the motion?
To accept.
Accept the, the.
Yellow.
The yellow.
For 2920. We need a second. Then we, we already had discussion, but I think we're to ask backwards, you know what I mean?
We like doing it that way.
Yeah, that's okay. Do we have a second?
I have a, I'm giving you a second.
Okay, then.
All in favor?
All right.
What's the motion?
To accept yellow.
Yes.
For 2920.
It's a three-year contract. It's a three-year contract.
Okay, so I didn't know that.
I know you told us what it is.
Yep, that's.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I, I, we voted, 'cause I didn't vote.
Okay.
You missed it?
Oh, I didn't vote. I didn't know we were done voting yet.
Or talking.
I went over to the library, and I did quite a walk. It's a mess, the yard, and I'm sure you know that. The weeds, the dandelions, it's a mess, the weeds that we have in there. And so the only question, I guess, and point I have, is that when I take a look at the numbers for the spring cleanup, I think, I just, and, you know, if your recommendation is yellow, I'm gonna go with your recommendation, because you gleaned all of this, but, you know, I find that to be a low number.
I do too. And quite frankly, that, and that's what I put to you guys, okay? I'll, I'll put it to you. It is a low number. Now that we have a price schedule and a little bit more attention to, we never had a contract before. It was just, here it is. Now that we have a contract, now we know what specifically is going to be done, then, then we shouldn't have any issues associated with anything like that.
Exactly.
I mean, that's.
In the RFP, if he doesn't meet those requirements, he can be booted, right?
That's right.
Absolutely right.
So there's no reason not to. I think it was done pretty solidly, so I, I don't have any reservations.
But I, I, I'll address that in a little bit more detail.
If it turns out that they don't perform, you're gonna be on them right away.
Right, right.
Okay, then I'll vote yes.
Okay.
I guess it's unanimous now.
All right, well, guys, listen, that is, the, the yellow is our current landscaper, Royal Landscaping. Now, what you have to understand is, is that Mr. De Sanctus wasn't heavily involved with Miss Lolly, with Mrs. Lolly. You know, he, he went to her house and visited with her, you know, and, and they were very close. He's done a lot of things gratis, and, and I think he understands that there's a little bit more attention now to, to the grounds and a little bit more attention to the contract, and I think he's, you know, I think he'll do a good job. The blue was, was Parisi, very professional, very well done, and the orange was, was Mr. Acetti. You know, so again, a professional guy, professional company, all very, all very well done. I would like, in the red net, he was disqualified, so I'd rather not just say his name, but I would like the board's permission to write thank you letters on behalf of the board for their participation in the bids.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ed, thank you for doing it. You did a fabulous job, and I'll tell you something, it's just a fabulous job, putting it all together, being confidential, getting it out, keeping us informed. I just, I wish I had the time and the knowledge to do something like this. You did a great job. I can't thank you enough.
Oh, thanks, Ed. Thank you.
I'd like to say, you know, echo what Heather said, but that, with regard to the red, I think for purposes of openness, we need to identify who that last one, even though he was disqualified, the, the open meeting is law.
Can I send it to you?
It's gonna have to be made a matter of record.
Because I, I can't.
Oh, frankly.
Yeah, I would bring his bid to you.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't wanna send a bid. No, no, I'm just saying that it would have to be made available to anyone.
Just want his name, that's all.
Yeah. No, no, that's it.
All right, I'll send it to you.
No, you don't have to send it, just, no.
Okay, the three companies again were Royal.
Royal.
Parisi.
Parisi.
Acetti.
Acetti.
Parisi. Yeah.
And the study?
Yeah. A-C-E-T-I.
No way to quote, right?
Yeah.
How about I can try the quote?
What?
How about I can try the quote?
Was that your company, Les?
No, but I called them up.
Oh.
Yeah, less than, less than this. This was a good team, I believe.
Okay, this was over.
So Building and Browns is concluded.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, Personnel.
Wait, Building and Browns?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Since I don't. One of the things that we did do last time is we talked about two items that were in the salmon room in the storage.
Right.
And those were discarded, and they have been paid for the removal, so everybody is happy. However, there are a few more items that are there, and in trying to dispose of them, it was suggested that we make an inventory of them, send it to the Vatican, get the blessing of the Pope, and then, and only then, should we be able to get rid of them.
Do I hear a little sarcasm?
Absolute, absolute.
Do I hear just a little sarcasm?
No, not at all. But we have four items.
Okay.
They're basically, no, six items that are garbage. We have a couple of mats that had some type of covering on that are rep, that the kids used to play on, and they'd like to get rid of them. All right, Lena, the green things down the stairs?
Yes, it's right.
We'd like to just go them away, or get rid of them.
No, just get it, when you talk then, an absolute status. Good, I cannot throw away anything until, you know, proper paperwork will be completed.
Well, in my non-professional opinion, that's what should be done, that should be discarded.
Well, Les, that's, that's what we do, but, you know, if, if, if public funds are spent to buy public assets, then it has to be accounted for right through its disposal, and it doesn't matter what it is. It doesn't matter if it's an asset and if it's in inventory, whether it's even in inventory or not, it's there and it's assumed to be.
I don't know if it's in inventory.
Well, let me tell you something, the inventory list is very, very shady at best, but, but at the end of the day, we must, but we must categorize it. Well, I'm not, I don't mean shady, I meant too general, it's general, not shady, just general, okay? And, and, and I'm sorry for using that word, that's not what I meant. So what we have to do is, we have to place it on a.
We were just kidding, yeah.
I know. On an, on an excess and obsolete list, list what that item is, and then have board approval to dispose of it, so that everything is covered right to the end. Okay? And unfortunately, that is the process, and we gotta follow it.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, I have a list of what's.
Does that make the mats up the balance sheet?
Huh?
Yeah, right.
I think that's what he's wanting to do.
Well, they're even on there.
He wants us to approve certain items.
Right.
Yeah, well, Lena, well, Lena's getting that list together for us.
No, we already got it.
Oh, yeah, I, I.
She gave it. No, let's talk about it tomorrow.
Huh?
Let's talk about it tomorrow.
Yes. I email it to you tomorrow, okay?
All right.
You're gonna redo the list and hand give me already?
It's not the same. I email you everything tomorrow in PDF.
Okay.
Okay, we're not, we're not gonna die if we don't solve this tonight.
No, we're not.
No, we'll, 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 we'll do that tomorrow, BG. Personnel, Personnel. As Lena mentioned, we had a meeting with the staff at J and I on 16th. This was part of the Personnel Committee discussion and agenda. Yes, Les?
I have another question.
Yes.
Tom allowed? Of course. Part of the Building and Grounds was also, there was a discussion on four computers that are recommended for disposal, and I think Elena sent out an email, everybody.
I have a list prepared by Roy Sen, but I checked each single item, but again, it should go through library board, it should be upstaged.
Les, what, 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 the process is, is that Elena brings that to the Building and Grounds Committee.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We review it, and we say, this looks good, and then we bring it to the board for approval.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought I was on the Building and Grounds Committee, except I never tend to be, so I don't know when it, ah, that's okay.
My daughter. All right. This one, I've gotta explain myself.
You, you, you do this? I'll do that.
I wanna wrap some.
Yes, wrap it. They're by 50s, you can, so they're by 50s. Take 50.
Well, we gotta go.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I think I will.
All right.
All right.
I apologize.
Personnel.
Personnel, y'all. We had, like I said, we had a meeting with the employees on Friday morning, and, last week, and it went well. I mean, they, there was obviously questions regarding the, the policy handbook, and there were questions about the performance reviews. You know, the performance reviews are brand new. We've never done them before, although it's been in our policy forever, we've never done them. And so, you know, it's just, it was just a matter of working through some issues and, and some very, I really couldn't understand how anybody could evaluate yourself before you do something, but that was the bottom line. So anyway, that got cleared up real fast. Well, not real fast, but eventually.
Yes.
Then, then we discussed the, the policy manual. Now, if you recall, the Personnel Committee brought forth to the board a couple of amendments regarding reference to at-will employment, okay? There were other issues that were overlooked within the policy manual regarding that, okay? The same type of issues. I'm gonna pass these around and just quickly go through it with y'all regarding what, what should be done regarding that and a couple of other things.
So essentially, it's, it's not changing the rules, it's just a few places where they showed up again.
Yes, and they had some great suggestions as well regarding, you know, some inclusions that were omitted, you know, so, so there's some yellow. For, for example, on page one, you see in, highlighted in yellow, New York State Retirement System. There's no mention of it. That is a benefit to our employees. Full-time employees are automatically in, and part-time employees can elect to do it. So I put that into the table of contents for your review. On page four, which is the next page, okay? Page two, which is actually page four in the bottom, in the introduction. Again, here's the reference to, to at-will. Just delete those words and those sentences, and we're good to go, okay? On page eight, which is the third page, same thing. We're correlating, right, the terminated employers, and, and, both employee. Again, that's, just delete that, and we're good to go. Page nine, the same thing, under introductory period, delete that, and we're, we're good to go. Performance evaluation on page 10, the, the employees brought a great point. Hey, how often are we gonna do, you know, a performance evaluation? And so I put in at least annual, okay? So to give the board flexibility on whatever they wanted to do in the future, but at least annual, okay? Page 12, this is, I just put in a quick blurb on New York State Retirement System. The New York State Retirement System is available to all full-time and part-time employees. Please ask your supervisor and consult the New York State Retirement webpage for information. Okay? Yes?
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yes.
And I'm gonna make this as brief as I can. Governments are finding that if they don't have proof that they offer their part-timers insurance, or retirement, they can come back 20 years later and say, you don't have proof, and therefore, the time earned within the system is applied to them, and then your, we at the library get to pay for that. So we need to make sure, I'm not, and I, I don't wanna, we might wanna add one sentence there about that, that we make sure we have a sign-off. Like, the town has a sign-off. I implemented that a decade ago.
Yeah.
Okay? They have to, all part-timers must sign off saying they don't, now they're not taking advantage of the retirement.
Okay.
Okay? I can get you a copy of that form, I'll give you the best, and then I'll get off my soapbox.
No, I think it's a good point.
Town of Marcy, Town of Marcy, they had a lifeguard, and she was 16, and they don't have anything like that. She's, she, a couple of years ago, was 56, and because of that, she was actually a tier one, and they couldn't prove that they didn't offer it to her, and so now the Town of Marcy is paying her some money for her. So we need to have documentation that we offered it to our part-time employees. They may choose to not take it, but I think if we put something in there, the onus is on, is at least written there that they must.
Right, if they bring their handbook, then it's.
Right, yes.
I'm sorry, I just.
Hey.
Well, that's a good point.
What I'll do is, okay, should the, should the part-time employee like not to participate, please sign acknowledgment form two, or something.
That should also be dealt with at the hiring time, not just.
Right, this is it, this is it. Okay? All right. We, we noted, noted, okay? And then page 20, at the top of the page, again, reference to at-will, strike it, and page 21, the last thing, the last bullet there, strike it.
Great, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Are you in favor, Les? Are you in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Les isn't saying.
All right, listen, with, before we go, before we go into the executive session, before I ask to go into the executive session, the, the golf, okay? These are the brochures for the golf tournament on September the fourteenth at Stonebridge, okay? I've got two hundred of them made up, I'll, I'll pass these out. Rich would have liked each of you to take twenty, all right, but take as many as you think that you can distribute and effectively solicit for sponsorships and for players, okay? The pamphlets are pretty self-explanatory, they're hot off the Flemma Press at the house.
The Flemma Press?
Yeah.
Has a nice ring to it.
Yeah. Okay? Any questions on the golf tournament, guys, or Personnel Committee, before we go ask for executive?
I just wanna, well, if you're done with that, we can just, as far as, we're gonna come out and then, like, for technology. Elena pretty much, Elena pretty much covered what was going to be talked about on the technology, plus the additional meeting, my meeting with Mary Nody today, which was put off till tomorrow, but that's not a big deal.
And now you're gonna have a meeting with.
With Mid York, and so that pretty much covers it, okay? I mean, there's still that other outstanding, working with Joe, what's our codes officer's name, Joe Booth? On the L side to the LED side, but that's neither here nor there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jim, do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Albert Shor.
I am very short on all this, but tonight I do have a couple of things, but I'll make it as brief as I can.
Yeah.
Number one, we did have our legislative breakfast on April twenty-fourth. We used to have these, as I explained last month, we dropped them because of whatever reason, and I thought it was time to do it again, it was very successful. We had people from the village, the town, the county representatives, Senator Griffo was here. Assemblywoman Tenny said she couldn't make it, she sent her deputy, who was very useful, but then Claudia showed up herself.
Yeah, she did.
She came herself, and they were all very impressed. We did not do a program, we used to do programs back when we were raising money to go to this, and we don't do that anymore, so I said, let's not have that. These are legislators, my whole purpose in doing all this public relations, get people into the library, and get more people into the library, and that was my main thrust. They were all very happy about it, because they gave politicians a chance to talk to other politicians. That's what they come for. But in the process, they also enjoy the library, they see what we're all about, and I had some very favorable comments. We also, okay. Next topic, any questions about that?
How, how many people showed up?
Well, we invited about twenty-three, usually just legislators. About fifteen or sixteen actually could make it. If we do this again, and I hope we do it annually with your permission, I would press earlier.
As long as you're paying, we can do as many times as you want.
Well, and that was my next point. You paid for it, with your contributions last time, and I'm gonna mention this anyway, but since he broke up, I'll mention it now. We have a sunshine fund of a hundred and forty dollars, which has not budged, thank God. But now we have twenty-two dollars extra in our sunshine fund, because between the legislative breakfast and another function which we had this past Monday, right? I spent money on that, so we have money, and I still had twenty-two dollars left over, I'll get to that in a minute.
My wife would love you, yeah.
Your wife would?
Oh, yeah, man, she likes thrift.
I'm, I'm scared, I'm scared.
Okay.
Okay, so, what was I saying?
The legislative breakfast is successful, we're gonna talk about the sunshine fund.
Well, I just did.
We got twenty-two bucks in it, so.
Extra, okay.
You mean you have a hundred and forty plus twenty-two?
Right. But there's a reason for that, the breakfast with the help of Connie Stevens, it was very helpful, as she always has been. She helped us save money, very quickly, like me, and we did all this for a very reasonable sum. But then I took it by myself, with the latest cooperation, to have a Founder's Day cake this past Monday. And that was very successful. I ordered a big sheet cake from Hannaford's, we had coffee, the staff kinda pitched in before the working hours, it helped out. And I sat there for hours, watching the cake and helping to cut it, and so on, and it was very successful.
Nice.
We had the kids, we did the seniors, we had all the people in between. So, we had money left over, and that's the twenty-two dollars. Okay, my main thrust today, or this evening, is the, yeah, I did that, is Friends of the Library. I don't think the Friends get enough attention, and certainly not enough appreciation. I will start with giving their monthly report. Friends treasury is now forty-one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents. The Turner Fund is eighty-six hundred dollars, both will grow even more by the end of this month. You might wonder where this money comes in, under running banks, or going to the racetrack, or what, and the answer's this. They sell things, they sell tote bags, they sell cupbooks and mugs, and of course, maybe the big bookstore sales we have. Jay knows about that, because it's why it's always in his case. The bookstore averages around five to hundred to six hundred plus a month in income. And I wanted that to be duly noted. By the way, the sales tax issue, which came up a month ago, they're on top of it, they're handling that sales tax issue. Next coming up, ice cream social, which we do every July, and this year, it's gonna mark it down, is Wednesday, July nine, seven to nine, the usual time, the usual accoutrements. Elena has already been doing what, I used to do this myself, and now she's doing it. Apply to local businesses for small grants for ice cream, get it free if we can. I had to clean up a lot of times, and it's a mess cleaning of melting ice cream, forget that. For example, you either have, or we're gonna do this, you go to Creekside, which has the best omelets in the whole area, I think. And to Nicky Duros for ice cream contributions. And I also found a valuable helper to scoop. I, I kinda bullied him to do it, because he used to do it every year, Joe Griffo, the state senator. And I'm gonna try to get to Tony Palencia, he used to come every year, I got him scooped one year. The first year he did it, he did it in a suit, shirt and tie, the fourth day was a mess. He didn't get mad, but he liked it, he came back for years, he couldn't make it last year, but I'll work on it.
But they got nice scoop last year.
Yeah, we did.
Side by side.
Side by side, yeah.
That's important.
Yeah.
Come back again this year.
It was pretty clean.
I, I, I think you find your, your Friends of the Library would be very happy if they saw the board members more often. They see me all the time.
But, no, I dropped in to see him a couple times.
Yeah, oh, he's been there, 'cause I live in the library anyway, practically, so I don't count. But if you can get involved with them and express your appreciation, would be very helpful.
For one, it's worth, I'd stop and visit one of their meetings, tell them what the board was doing, and tell them the board was happy, I, I think that's.
But just keep it, keep it spontaneous. Okay, that's the ice cream social, and then the next one after that will be the miniature golf tournament. Not the one you're talking about, the miniature golf, which we've done now for several years. It's very successful, very innovative, very inventive, and the Friends do all the work, and they do illicit help. This year is Saturday, October eighteen, from ten o'clock in the morning to four o'clock. And again, for all these events, make money, of course, but bring people in. You get the kids, you get the parents, you get the grandparents that come in for the miniature golf.
And that's the one in the library, right?
Yes, that's in the library, and we always could use help on clever people who like to design holes. We get some pretty good results. Okay. Finally, I guess, let me see, oh, two more things. The next meeting of the Friends will be Saturday, May thirty-one, ten AM, and it's always in the library, usually the large group, if we can all in. May thirty-one, Saturday, ten AM, and maybe get a better turnout this time. Finally, and this is a special, I guess, Lena can help me, we're having a book sale on June seventh, this is a little different. We recently inherited, what, a whole house full of books?
Wow.
There's like seventy-five crates of books.
Oh, okay, and right now, if you don't believe.
Bugless.
If you don't believe me, you can downstairs in the basement, and most of them are in the salmon room, all piled up, ready to go, and the idea.
No bad ones, do they?
I think that's it, or something.
I hope not, well, we, we, we get a lot of books in, but Aunt Barbara, she get a medal, she's a terrific volunteer. She's in there all the time, every day of the week, and she keeps that piled down, she runs the bookstore. But even she was engulfed this time, it's just the whole household. So, anyway, on June sixth, Friday, we'll be setting up from ten to five, all those piles and piles of books in the salmon room. Anyone who wants to help, come on in.
How are you gonna set them up, just lay them on the tables, or what?
I don't know what they're gonna do, I haven't got into that yet.
Where are they from, Jim?
I don't know whose house it was, you know, it was a home.
Doesn't matter.
What, what time on sixth June?
Uh, that'd be from.
Ten to five.
Ten to five.
That's when you need the help?
Yes, that's a Friday, Friday, June sixth, ten to five, the books are all downstairs in the salmon room.
That's D-Day, all wear heads.
That's D-Day. You mean, DJ Day?
Dial away.
Okay.
Okay.
But the book sale itself will be on the next day, on the lower level, and that'll be, no time, get your time for that?
June seven, yes, it's actually the time, I believe it's eleven to four.
Eleven to four.
And that's the day you got that speaker too, that great speaker.
Why, yes, and I, I will be here as well, June seventh.
Okay, I have one more right, and then I can shut up. Any other questions so far? I'm going fast on purpose.
June eighth is the actual sale?
Seven.
Seven.
June seven.
Six to set up, the seventh to sell.
The Joshua Turner Fund is not part of the Friends of the Library.
No, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that. The other thing is something that has just come up, and I don't know our precedence on this. We have a sunshine fund, as you know, hasn't been touched, but now we may have to touch it. A longstanding member died a very short time ago, most of you weren't on the board then, but you were, Kevin, so was I, Sheldon Storier.
He did?
He died a couple of weeks ago, and he was a long time member, at the end of, I saw him a few months ago at Presque Glen, and I knew he didn't have long to go, and he died a very short time ago. And I was gonna mention it anyway, but Connie Stevens also called me to say the same thing, we should do something for him. And I asked her what precedent we have, and I did not have time to do any more research on this, because I was getting the thing set up. She thought maybe it was a figure of thirty-five dollars, if it wasn't been used before. She said it's in one of the procedures or policy things, or whatever.
What are you talking about, flowers or something?
Well, no, no, not flowers at this point, maybe ask his wife, Will, perhaps a, a book, or two of us, we can put in with the inscription. What do you think?
We can write it down in the book sale and give her bags full of them.
Don't make she.
Les.
She does have, she does have a good sense of.
What are the other thoughts, maybe, and you could do that, I don't care about.
No.
Is maybe, maybe because you knew him, and you were around during a period of time, we write a memorial for the town crier, and it doesn't have to be huge, long.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
I like that better.
Yeah, thanking him and reminding the community what he, what he did with the library, and his devotion to the library, and then he'll be sorely missed.
And signed by the board president, or, you know.
And you'd like to leave it at that?
Yeah, that'd be beautiful.
Well, what, what did you have in mind, Jim?
Well.
Thirty-five dollars seems like sort of a token.
It would be a book, I guess, you get a book, you put his name in the plate in.
You know, but I, but I think Heather, Heather brings up a good point, I mean, I'm not trying to.
Oh, you could do both.
I like the town crier.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that, that hit eleven thousand, twenty thousand residents.
Say what they think.
You could put a half a dozen book stamps and books, it don't cost you anything, you buy it.
That's true.
But the recognition, I think, of the town crier, I think, would mean so much more.
Yeah.
I really, and he was on the board, I was on the board when Sheldon was there, in twenty-ten.
Yeah, he was, he was on his best days, but he was having trouble. Well, anyway, the town crier definitely a very good idea, do you wanna leave on that, or do you wanna also offer a chance to inscribe a?
Well, let, let something together, and, and, you know, in memoriam, or however, I don't know what's appropriate.
It's kind of, you know, I think you've got a consensus that people wanna do something, but I don't think we have an agreement on what we're gonna do. I mean, I liked Heather's idea, I'm not, I'm not keen on a book.
I, I.
Jim, aren't you good at writing that type of, of?
Yeah.
I know, doesn't that, your background lends itself to writing memorial, or.
She's retired.
I could preach a memorial sermon, but that may not be what it.
Well, do an audio for the time, you know.
But, would you move?
I just don't know the man, that would be the only reason I would.
I, I, I was here when he was here.
Then you do.
Yeah, and, and we can get together on that if we want to do it. His wife, by the way, is widow, she's, lives at Presque Glen, in one of the, what do you call it, cottages. And she, I was talking to somebody the other day, she'll still be staying there, I believe.
I would say if this had happened, if we knew this right away, if, if a family says gifts to Stephen Swan or whatever, the board could do those, but this sounds like we couldn't.
I think the fact is, it's so late, it just makes it complicated.
I think the town crier is the perfect, I, I move that we go with the town crier.
I second that.
I vote for that.
I don't think.
Anyway, do we have an author?
Yeah, Jim's gonna do it.
No, no.
To write the memorial. It has to be somebody who knows him.
It has to be somebody.
Jim knows him more intimately than anybody, and Kevin.
I don't either. Well, I can get together with Janet, we'll get something out of it, the point is you wanna leave it at the.
Together with Janet, there you go.
Yeah, I think for now, that would be nice, that would be beautiful.
Yeah, she used to just phone them once, you know, people did wrong, my name was always there.
Are you, are you caught up, Jim?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, legislative, Rich is not here, he had to leave early, policies and procedures, we had a whole bunch of procedures, but I think John's just gonna present us with one.
Let's go with one. And passed out earlier is the records retention policy, that also cuts it out. You have seen something like that before, but this, this has changed from the others, others that we got together and made a couple of them permanent. Another thing that was added in there was that, before anything is destroyed, the board approves it. So, we could have a list of everything that we say gets destroyed.
Sure.
That's also added into that.
And my suggestion for that was at the January meeting, for example, we do all of them, like, seven years ago, first, you know, two thousand and seven, and whatever. So, it would be a fairly simple.
Good reason for that, but maybe we wanna keep longer.
But it brings it up every year for discussion.
What I, what I did say, I went out into the, you know, various libraries, and it's a standard, this is like a boilerplate, what's out there, but for what you just, or somebody said here, about, that there is some, there is some information out there that, that ties in, are the library's responsibility with the town clerk, but the bottom line, this is a darn good start, so.
These are minimum requirements.
Yeah, there, there is something, but this is, this is, this is good, so.
I, I like it. I like the idea that we still, we should get it to decide.
Yeah.
Even though it gives guidelines.
I move we accept it, or what are we yet to do?
Someone's got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Okay.
Jay, there, I wanted to very slightly.
You ran out of time.
For tonight, I totaled up the amount of, number of dollars we received in May to this date. Give you an idea, sixteen hundred and eighty dollars have come in donations from May one to now. So, it's not.
Is that to the Friends?
No, no.
Oh, to the library?
These are donations.
From May first to now, forty-one days?
Well, it varies, no, yeah, three or four months that weren't too good. Three or four years ago, even more money, you went through hard times, as you know, but sixteen hundred and eighty dollars, all thank you notes.
I feel we approved your plan.
Do you have a list of the donors?
Oh, yeah, I keep lists for three years.
No, I think we, the board should be presented with the donors.
Yeah, I just, I'm killing right there.
Earl always did it.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and are you talking to the Friends or to the library?
No, no, it's just the library, not the Friends.
No, I, I, you're, you're right, Kevin, the board should know who donated, but I think, didn't, Jim, you said you keep records or something?
Oh, I keep the records for years.
No, no, I mean, but your thank you things, I think, or something like that, don't you?
Yeah, I get, I used to get the sheets from Earl, I worked on those, I've got my own overhead, my overall master, which you set up.
Can you raise the deadline further?
I might, yeah. Okay. Just a couple more, I think, what we're doing, yes, we're working on a couple of policies. We're putting, putting together arts and exhibits, and we're also being, putting together donations and.
Gifts.
Gifts. And we'll be, we're working on those too, and I gotta send a minute, so I'll, I'll send a copy around.
Great job, thanks. Great job, thanks.
How do we go about combining those computers?
You'll discuss that tomorrow. There's also an issue from technology, because, I'll tell you where the chairperson from BG K and T. Building grounds and, no, no, that's what I think in the education, BG.
The school, T for transportation.
That's what, BG, sorry about that, I get it mixed up.
Okay, you done, John?
Yep.
Thank you, um, let's see. Kevin, did you look into the town crier, putting stuff in the town crier, or not?
No.
That was your, it was a good idea, so maybe you could talk to Elena about putting something in the town crier.
Yes, if you need to, we usually put everything, programs and books and announcements. Yes, if you need a, we usually put everything, pro, programs and, uh, books, an announcement, and then you send to promote our library, uh, rewriting a short article about new things going on in library, but if you have.
Who handles the town crier now?
Actually, Rose, who, under my supervision, I sometimes make suggestion, correction.
That's, that's a serious thing, right?
Sure.
All right. Elena, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you these.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for the library, just, you know, at, at the front desk, okay?
Sure, I'll do.
And, and I'll send you a town crier, uh, revision of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Would this be appropriate to answer on the other library meeting?
All right.
Just walking by it.
Come time to go, quick.
Are you gonna talk about the golf bowling?
I just did it.
You know, you offer these yourself?
Yeah.
On your own?
You know, I've got support one for the.
Don't you think we should support you a little bit?
That's fine, no, uh, Jay, thanks for the offer, this is my, this is my donation to the, uh, to the cost, to the, to the golf.
It's pretty pricey, I just.
It's okay.
All right, well, let's, let's say that we offered, and let's say that, uh, if it gets to owner, as you mentioned it.
Okay.
And we'll do something about it.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Shall we, uh, go into a secondary session?
Yes, I move to do an executive session.
For the purpose of.
For the purpose of, uh, discussing the, the, uh, performance, uh, of a particular employee.
I put it at the end, so you wouldn't have to hang around forever.
Oh, good, so, actually, am I okay to leave, or should stand there?
Nope.
No, no, you're gonna go.
Okay, good, okay.
Thanks, Elena.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a nice day, nice evening.
Sorry about that.
All right, well, so, um, I make a, a motion, uh, that, um, that after the six-month, um, uh, evaluation period of Director, Director Elena Schneider, uh, that we, uh, we approve her as a Hartford Public Library, um, Director.
Community employee based on civil service.
Community employee.
Yeah, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in both?
I move to it, Jim. No, it's you.
Shall we adjourn this?
I move.
Uh, this is gonna, this is gonna take a while, this, uh, evaluation thing.
Yeah, uh, Jay, what I'll do is I'm gonna get, um.
No names on, right?
No.
Yeah, okay, you did this, okay, thanks, Les, so let's go.
No names on.
Very good, so I got Les's, and I got Jim's to finish up, and then, uh, I'll send you the final report.
Uh, and I'm gonna hope you to be part of this.
You got it, sir.
You're going to do it. Great, perfect.